Council meeting of Wednesday, February 5th, 2020 at 9:00 AM. Mr. Winarski, Ms. Allen, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Witherspoon. Please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge allegiance.
Mr. President, I'd like to take this time to remember Mary Beth Kennedy for all she contributed to the community with her family. She had a major impact on youth, on the homeless population, and as Mel said, to be internationally known, her motto and the way she and her late husband lived was that you can change the world by love.
Amen. Pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with dignity and justice for all.
Approval of minutes from the city council meeting of January 15th, 2020, and bills for payment on January 30th and February 7th, 2020. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Ms. Schoff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. At this time, we're going to waive the rules, vote on waiving the rules for the appointment for our new councilperson, Mr. Brennan. Voting to waive the rules, Ms. Allen, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Ms. Schoff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. By Mr. Winarski and seconded by Mrs. Schoff, resolved by the council of the City of Erie, that David Brennan, Erie PA, is hereby appointed city councilperson to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Mr. Kazimir Kowalski with a term expiring on January 4th, 2021. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Ms. Schoff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. This resolution will adopt six to zero, and so at this time, we will be swearing in Mr. Dave Brennan.
You're up, Dave.
Right over here by the mic, I guess, or wherever. Yeah, my glasses, sorry.
Left hand?
Left hand?
Left hand, right hand, up left down on the Bible, right?
Okay, there we go.
I, David Brennan, do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth. And I will discharge the duties of my office as Erie City Councilman with the oath.
Congratulations and thanks. Mr. President, we can continue with your questions.
We have anybody here this morning regarding a repository sale?
Morning, council.
Good morning.
Scott Henry, the director of the city's redevelopment authority. I'm actually here today on behalf of the Erie Land Bank. The land bank has submitted an offer to the tax claim bureau to purchase 742 East 7th Street. This property has been vacant and largely abandoned since 2014, suffered some significant damage to the roof within the last several months, and was declared blighted in 2019. The land bank has access to funding for, to demolish the structure. We believe that will require demolition, so we'll be prepared to move on that as soon as ownership is transferred upon approval by all the taxing bodies. Any questions?
This is where you come in.
Scott, I'll ask you the questions that we always ask everybody. You have a plan for the property and you have the resources to carry it forward?
Yes.
On deadline? Okay. So just elaborate on that a little bit, just so everybody knows what...
Well, I mean, our plan will be to acquire the property. We will contract for demolition of the structure, and then, you know, we will try to market the property to the adjoining property owners as a side lot. Otherwise, I mean, we'll hold on to it in the, at least in the short term and maintain it.
Thank you.
What's the address again?
742 East 7th Street.
So this property is already in the land bank, or you want to acquire it and place it into the land bank?
It's currently, it has been through the tax sale process and is being held on escrow by the county in what they call their repository for unsold properties. So we, the land bank will purchase it from the county tax claim bureau, and then it will become under the land bank's ownership, and then we would proceed with demolition.
Can you say who the parties are on the left or on the right?
I don't have that information off the top of my head, no. But it is surround, there are residential properties on both sides of it.
On both sides?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Basically, it is considered a blighted property?
It has been declared blighted by the city's blighted property review committee.
Thank you.
If you look at it, the last damage it suffered, I believe it was a tree come down on the roof, but actually, if you look at the house, it looks like a dinosaur took a big bite right out of the front end of the roof. So I imagine it's had a lot of weather infiltration over the last six or eight months, so I imagine that it's in pretty poor shape inside.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other repository sales this morning? Any other repository sales this morning? Hearing none, that brings us to citizens to be heard. Good morning.
My name is Jamelia Gates. I'm the community school director at East Middle School. Been in this position for three years. I was coming to speak about the parking ordinance that was just passed in October 2019. Two Mondays ago, around 4:00 PM, I was pulled over on Fourth and State. I was taking a student home, and I was headed to another meeting at the school district. When I was pulled over by police for no traffic violation or anything like that, I was pulled over for tickets. I wasn't aware what he was pulling me over for until like 10 minutes he waited in the car before he even approached my car and told me he's pulling me over for tickets and that I have to either walk or find an Uber home. And I stated to the guy that, or the police officer, that I'm six months pregnant with twins. I just began paying tickets. I had no knowledge of this increase of the ordinance. And I said, I also have a student. Well, I'm sorry, that's what I have to do. I'm like, well, can I go to city council right now and just pay him? Well, no, I already, I already put the boot in. Okay, so I can do you a favor by letting you go park in front of city council. Park in front of city council, I said, well, if I, if I'm parking in front of there, why can't I just go and pay tickets? No, because I already booted your car. So I was made to get out the car and have to boot, and boot my car. I just recently started paying on tickets. I'm not opposed to paying my tickets, my tickets, I'm gonna pay them. I just began paying like a month later, I mean, a month earlier, when I went to the parking clerk to find out about the tickets. She was rude to me, she was sarcastic to me. I had no idea about the ordinance. She gives me the letter of the new ordinance. There's nothing, I asked, where is it? Stated in there that this was retroactive to tickets that I got before this ordinance was passed. There was no option for a payment plan, there was no option for anything. I had 72 hours from now, tickets that were at $300 or $400 were now $1,300 with $200 added to that, well, $1,100 with the $200 for the boot. $1,300 in 72 hours, no payment plan, no option or anything, or they'll impound my car for additional $200 plus a daily fee. Luckily, I have a job that I'm able to do that. However, I feel that for, if we're trying to strengthen community relations with our citizens' communication, that is not how things should be handled. There was no discretion by the police officer that I was six months pregnant and just to get out and walk. Also, with there not being a payment plan, people don't even get a check in 10 days of the increase. There's 14 days period for a biweekly check. I feel like this needs to be revisited, and that language needs to be stated in there for people who are not aware of this, and their question to me, or their response to me is, well, it's been all over TV and newspaper. People aren't obligated to look at the newspaper and the television. Some people don't even have a television. If this was a notice that was sent to my home, that'd be a different story. I had nothing to argue. If it was stated in here that it was retroactive to previous tickets, regardless if there was a grace period, or if that language was stated in a lawful past ordinance, then it wouldn't have been an issue. But the fact didn't matter that, I'm not arguing the fact that I pay, I have to pay my tickets, but it went up almost $800 from a month ago, from when this new ordinance finally passed on January 1st or 6th, whatever day it was. I just think that if that's the case, then that means a disabled person can be pulled over for tickets, that means an elderly person can be pulled over for tickets, and it's not right. I feel like there needs to be a warning. If the police officer could have gave me a warning and said, hey, you have within seven days to go to the city hall and figure this out, or reboot your car, that's a different situation. But the fact that it was so inhumane that a pregnant woman has to tell, you tell me I need to get an Uber or walk because of tickets. I didn't get pulled over for a non-traffic violation, I have never had a traffic violation in my life, or a boot, or any record of any criminal activity in my life, to be pulled over in the middle of the day transporting a student and six months pregnant. So I wanted to bring that to your attention because I'm not sure if it's even okay that police are enforcing the parking authority codes. Like I said, this new ordinance, the way that it is set up with no payment plan, with no 14-day period, with no warning, with no notification to your home, is only going to affect poor people of this, of this city. And the normal person, a single parent, or young man, or whatever, wouldn't have been able to come up with $1,300 in 72 hours without any type of payment plan to get my car out. So I wanted to bring that to your attention to let you know that that's happening.
How many tickets?
Excuse me?
How many tickets?
I had eight tickets, and the tickets were from an old car that I didn't have, that they combined with new tickets from my current car. And there's record that I had just paid one before this even happened. So they got behind, and I already was assessed the late fees from the previous ordinance, which I was abiding by. I don't think I'm immune to the law whatsoever, but I do feel like if I'm going to be charged an $800 increase in tickets, there needs to be stated somewhere in writing that it's retroactive.
Very good. Thank you. What I'm going to ask is our attorney, Mr. Betza, once again, bring that ordinance to our attention again to see if there's any language in there that we're not knowing or possibly isn't being known to the public, if there's some stipulations that maybe we did something wrong, or maybe we...
I have the ordinance right here. It's ordinance 64. It's not stated in here of retroactivity whatsoever.
There's a couple issues. First of all, the booting issue relates to how many unpaid parking tickets. So regardless of the fee, we'll get to that in a minute, the car is eligible, eligible to be booted because it has too many unpaid parking tickets. So the booting of it has nothing to do with the new ordinance. That's been the ordinance for a long, long time that predate all of those tickets. If you have more than three unpaid parking tickets, you can be booted. She has eight, so she's eligible to be booted. With regard to the fee, there is, there's two charges. There is the actual parking ticket, and then there's the late fee. The parking ticket did not change. The late fee does, and the late fee is not retroactive but prospective, meaning going forward. If you don't pay your parking tickets within a certain period of time after enactment of the ordinance, you incur the fee. In this case, as I understand it, and I'll look at it more specifically, I became aware of the issue, but if you don't pay the ticket after the ordinance goes into effect, it's an unpaid parking ticket, it triggers the increase. So nothing was applied retroactively. In terms of payment plan, I don't know the specifics of, I mean, I understand what you've said. I don't know what was offered and what can be addressed. That may be a solution that can be looked at, but it is unfortunate that the circumstances happen, but it's problematic when we have people, I don't take sides in this, but if you've got eight unpaid parking tickets, that's a big problem. And the fact that it relates to a prior car, or some of them relate to a prior car, is not relevant. You owe the tickets, and if you have the ticket, you can be booted.
Excuse me, I think that you're misconstruing what I've said. I'm not opposed to paying my tickets. I already was opposed late fees from the previous ordinance. The question is, where is the language that people will know this prospectively, because it's not written here prospectively? I was already assessed late fees from the last ordinance. My, my late fees were increased by the new ordinance set forth, set forth. Two, there is no payment plan offered, I asked. Three, we're not immune to paying tickets. That's not the question at hand. The question at hand is, can that language be properly stated so the next citizen pregnant woman is not affected and has to get out her car and walk or catch an Uber for tickets? And I, I need, I need documentation of, if I have this many tickets, this is what comes a boot. I'm not arguing the law, I'm arguing how it's treated to people. I think it needs to be a new process and how it's handled. That's my argument.
Ma'am, this is a citizens to be heard section, and we did hear your complaint and your issues regarding the parking tickets. We will follow up as a council to see, make sure the ordinance is, and how it was written is how it was presented to you, and we'll move forward from there.
Mr. President, though, I do think, we hardly have anybody in the audience here today, and I want to ask two things. One is, I think we need to know, are people being pulled over and booted? Because we did have a discussion about who's booting, if you remember during our budget sessions, about, you know, who should be doing the booting. Do we know how many motorists are pulled over and booted? I think that's a really important question to follow up on because it does indicate that there was a situation here where she was taking a student home. So I would like to know how many times somebody is pulled over and booted versus you're parked in front of somewhere. The second thing I want to point out is this is the very thing I asked about when we, when we increased those fees. And we were told that the people that we were going after were Canadian students who park at Mercyhurst who don't pay their tickets. I said, this, these fees are going to hurt poor people. They're going to hurt people who don't have driveways, who don't have off-street parking. And I asked that we could at least make sure we were finding out how this was going to impact people. So now we have a reason to move forward and, and look at how that ordinance has affected people. So I, I think that, and, and the other thing is, we always tell people when they come up to the podium, this isn't a dialogue. But if you look at the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act, it actually says that you can have dialogue with people. That's part of why we're here. So that's all I have to say about that, but we should follow up on this later and make sure we, we address the specific questions, but the broader issue.
And I paid my $1,300 the next morning, just to let you all know.
Thank you very much. Do you have any other citizens to be heard this morning? Any other citizens to be heard? Hearing none, Rose, we can move on with the agenda, please.
Ordinances for final passage, council file number 16146, ordinance two of 2020, and ordinance approving the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances parts of the various component codes of the codified ordinances of Erie, Pennsylvania. By Mr. Winarski and seconded by Mr. Witherspoon, the council file ordinance bill number 16146, and now known as official file ordinance number two, 2020, be finally passed by the city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Ms. Schoff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Winarski. City council passed official file ordinance number two, 2020, finally by a seven, nay, zero. I just want to mention that Mr. Brennan will be out of order until we get our new stuff printed up for the next meeting.
Not out of order.
Council file number 16147, official ordinance number three, 2020, appropriating the sum of $10,000 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from the Erie Community Foundation to build language access capacity and serve limited English proficiency populations. By Mr. Winarski, seconded by Mr. Witherspoon, the council file ordinance bill number 16147, and now known as official file ordinance number three, 2020, be finally passed by the city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Ms. Schoff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Winarski. City council pass official file ordinance number three, 2020, finally by a seven, nay, Ordinances for first reading, council file number 16148, and ordinance appropriate the sum of $15,000 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof. Contribution is from the Mercy Terrace Apartments for the purchase of police fire and winter maintenance equipment. By Mrs. Schoff, seconded by Ms. Allen, the council file ordinance number 16148, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Ms. Schoff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Winarski. City council read and adopt council file ordinance number 16148 by a seven, nay, zero on first reading. Council file 16149, and ordinance, in accordance with the 2020 City of Erie Capital Fund budget, the sum of $100,000 is appropriated from unappropriated and anticipated revenue for use by the City of Erie. This amount represents a contribution, Gannon University made to the City of Erie in 2019 to be used in the Department of Public Safety. By Mrs. Schoff, seconded by Ms. Allen, the council file number 16149, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Ms. Schoff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Winarski. City council read and adopt council file ordinance number 16149 by a seven, nay, zero on first reading. Council file number 16150, and ordinance amending Article 901.06, fees by amending subsection C2 to increase the degradation fee. By Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Ms. Schoff, the council file ordinance number 16150, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Ms. Schoff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Winarski. City council adopt, city council read and adopt council file ordinance number 16150 That'll take us to business, Mr. President. By Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Winarski, resolved by the council of the City of Erie, that the proper city officials, officials are authorized and directed to designate East 23rd Street between Great and German Streets as Reverend Amos Goodwin Senior Way in honor of his service and dedication to the Erie community and the Morning Star Baptist Church. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Ms. Schoff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Winarski. By Ms. Schoff, seconded by Ms. Allen, resolved by the council of the City of Erie, receiving the communications from the City of Erie authorities pursuant to Act 339, listing the names, positions, and salaries of their respective employees for the six-month period ending December 31st, 2019, be received in order to be placed on file in the Office of Accounts, Finance, and Budget. Erie Regional Water Airport Authority, Erie Water Authority, Erie Metropolitan Transit Authority, Erie Western PA Port Authority, Erie Park Authority/Zoological Society, Erie County Convention Center Authority, Erie Redevelopment Authority, Erie Housing Authority, and the Erie Parking Authority. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Ms. Schoff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Winarski.
Can I make a resolution to move the balance?
All righty, second?
I'll second.
Any separations?
It's pretty routine.
All right, moving the balance of the agenda, Ms. Allen, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Ms. Schoff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan, Ms. Winarski. Do have a waive rules for the EA cog, Mr. President, because of them having to vote late at their meeting, we could not put the resolution, resolution on before they did so. But she would like this voted on today. So voting to waive the rules on the EA cog resolution. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Ms. Schoff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Winarski. By Mr. Winarski and seconded by Ms. Schoff, resolved by the council of the City of Erie, that the following members of Erie City Council are hereby assigned to the Erie Area Council of Governments as of February 2020. Kathleen Schoff is the delegate, Dave Brennan first alternate, Ed Brzezinski alternate, Liz Allen alternate, Michael Keys alternate, James Winarski cog alternate, and Mel Witherspoon alternate. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Ms. Schoff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Winarski. All these resolutions passed seven to zero, and that will take us to committee reports, Mr. President.
Ms. Allen?
Thank you. I wanted to welcome back Nekan, who is the immigration, or immigrant refugee welcoming person to the mayor's office. She had been out after having foot surgery, and we had a really brief meeting the other day. We are, she's going to be concentrating on having Erie certified as a welcoming city, and there's a conference that comes up in June, and I'll be requesting to be able to go to that with her. Kathy and new councilperson, Dave Brennan and I, met yesterday with Sister Pat Lupo, Mike Campbell, and a couple of other people to get an update on Erie Coke and what the community is looking for in terms of how that moves forward, how monitoring, the cleanup, you know, what eventually happens at that site. And I have to say that the, the work that HACCA put into this project is amazing in terms of looking for community input. It could be a model for other types of issues that we deal with. I went to the Gannon Health Fair yesterday, and I, I wanted, wanted to mention this because there was an amazing amount of work that various Gannon departments put into in terms of educating students and the community about going tobacco-free. And the reason I want to acknowledge that is because Mary Jean Taylor from Gannon had spoken to us a number of times about having our parks become tobacco-free. And so there was really strong effort there to teach anybody who went to the fair about not only the dangers of smoking, but the hazards of vaping and how to have a healthy lifestyle. So, that's it.
Thank you.
Committee report, Mel.
No revoid. Ms. Schoff?
Thank you, Mr. President. I attended, and I saw Liz there and Mr. Brennan there, the Erie County Redevelopment Authority Open House last Friday. I think it's good to collaborate with our county counterparts. Um, I think it's good to collaborate with our county counterparts and, uh, hopefully there's new, uh, and exciting things to, um, bring to our attention in the future. I took a long overdue tour of the fire station companies with our new chief, Fire Chief Joe Waco, and I'm very thankful to him. And I attended the St. Anne's Neighborhood Watch Meeting last Thursday. And I really think that anyone who lives in neighborhood watch meeting areas should look into going to their watch meetings. St. Anne's has a very active watch group and everyone has something to say. And once again, the police officers are always there to answer questions, um, directly to the citizens. So if you are living in a neighborhood that has a neighborhood watch, please, uh, find out when they are and attend. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Brzezinski.
Thank you, sir. I get a rest for a couple of days, but next week, uh, I talked to Mr. Wells. I'm going to get the Gilligan's Island tour, three-hour tour, he told me, so I'll be able to firsthand see all the things happening at the Warner, uh, baseball stadium, of course, and down at the Bayfront. Uh, looking forward to that. I also have to meet with the folks at the Port Authority. Uh, after I'm done with those, probably next meeting, I'll have a better report for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Keys.
No report at this time. I look forward to meeting with, uh, the different agencies and authorities in the future.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Brennan.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I first just want to thank, uh, all the council members, uh, for selecting me to, to fill the council seat. You know, I know it was a tough decision. I know there's a lot of opinions on what, what council needs, what the city needs. So I just appreciate having the confidence and trust in me. And, uh, you know, I will be working hard and being a productive member and, and hopefully working with everyone, uh, on this council, uh, of course, in the city, trying to represent anybody to, to make our city move forward and, and bring some good ideas forward, uh, and, uh, build consensus on issues, uh, where we could, uh, you know, make our city an even greater place to live. Also, um, I do, did want to report about the meeting, uh, that I attended with, uh, Liz and Kathy. Thank you for inviting me to the meeting. Uh, definitely a big issue, uh, that we need to contend with. Um, I do have some past experiences with, uh, planning of that site. There's been some plans, plans way back that I kind of looked at that site. So, you know, hopefully I can contribute to some of the solutions, uh, because I know it's going to be a long process to bring that site back to reuse, but I hope to, uh, be involved in the future and, uh, and do what I can. And I know my council liaison assignments, uh, Parking Authority, Public Works, and Audit Committee, I believe, will, that, that, that's set in stone. I just want to make sure because I'll, I'll start attending those meetings.
I would say right now, we can discuss at our finance meeting if there's any tweaks we may want to do that, uh, could be more comprehensive.
Yeah, oh, no, whatever, whatever council sees fit that I would, uh, fit best is, uh, where I'm looking to do this. Uh, and that's my report. Thank you.
You. I just want to welcome Mr. Brennan back on board with us. Uh, he does bring some good experience and knowledge to this council as he did in the past. I'm sure he will do in the future here. I want to thank all my colleagues on council for their due diligence in the process. It, it wasn't bulletproof per se, but, uh, we had to come up with something and we, uh, did. I just, uh, believe we did get a great candidate out of the mix and, um, appreciate his, uh, effort to be one of us council folks. I do want to pass it over to our city controller, Stankovich.
I don't have a report, but, uh, next week there'll be an aggregate board meeting. So we'll be able to, uh, present a quarter to you, which I think has been very well. That's it for me.
Well, who's that? Who's that next to you? Where? Our city treasurer, Mr. Kowalski, uh, just came in the room.
Yes, I want to make a report that we've had some complaints that, uh, a lot of people haven't received their taxes and that's true to some extent. Uh, we mailed them out as a point of reference, uh, that Monday, I think it was the 27th. So they've been out there about over a week and a half. We have the problem isolated to a certain area, but they were mailed out. If you live, where do you live?
I live on 43rd Street.
Uh, on the east side?
East.
That's not one of our problem areas.
Well, I haven't received mine yet.
But, uh, we are checking into the problem, but rest assured, they were mailed out. So if you didn't get one, uh, you can call 870-1210 to give us a reminder so we can kind of narrow the problem down. But they were mailed out, they should have been there. I got mine within one day and people are paying, but for some reason, uh, we had some problem with the post office also, uh, with last year's bills. They were coming in really late and I think it relates to the problem because they shipped their mail to Pittsburgh. And when they do that, you know, too much handling? It doesn't make sense when you mail letter in Erie to your neighbor, sometimes it goes to Pittsburgh, gets processed, and then gets sent back to Erie. Too many hands and you know what happens. So we are aware of the problem. Like I said, call 870-1210 if you have a problem and we'll, we'll take your name and try to work it, but they were mailed out, rest assured.
Will you take care of my problem so I don't have to call the number?
You just pay for it. Thank you. Lamis.
Good morning. I'd like to welcome Councilman Brennan back to, um, public service. Look forward to working with you again. Um, just a few things I want to talk about. Um, for those of you who don't know, uh, we have Stephen Senegal here, uh, originally from Louisiana, uh, now lives in Brooklyn, Brooklyn, New York. He's a sculptor. Um, he's here with Erie Arts and Culture as part of a privately funded grant in which he will be working, um, with communities of color, uh, to, meeting with students and educators and local art, artists to create some public art that will be placed in neighborhoods within our urban core. And he will be here through February 14th. Also, um, wanted to let everybody know, in case they hadn't seen, Giselle Fetterman will be here on February 12th for a program at 11:00 AM at the Blasco Library regarding the 2020 census. We'll be having an Erie County Town Hall meeting. Um, again, I just want to stress the importance of the census. Uh, it impacts our federal funding, it impacts how much we get in terms of our CDBG money, which is money that we use to pave streets. It's money we give to the community centers and the neighborhoods to do the good work that they do for our youth and our seniors and our communities. Uh, for every resident, we do not count. For every resident we miss, we lose $2,100 a year for 10 years. If we miss only 1,000 people, that's $2.1 million a year for 10 years that we miss out on federal funding. That impacts how high we have to raise taxes or not raise taxes. So we really want to stress the importance of making sure that everyone's counted. Infants, elderly, immigrants, refugees, everyone will have the same nine-question short form to fill out. It'll be very easy. There are, there, the information will not be released for 72 years. So there will, it will only be reported in the aggregate, so there will be no names associated with it. Um, and people will be able to respond, um, online this time. They will be able to call on their home phone and report how many people are living in their household. Uh, and they will be able to, um, uh, they will get a, a, a notice in the mail starting March 15th. Um, and they, and then if they don't answer, um, the, the, April 1st, 2020 is census day. Um, that month is going to be the big push. If they don't answer either online or by calling the census on the phone, then the door-to-door enumerators will start, um, I believe in May. And that'll go through to the end of July. So we really, we're really hoping, we're trying to reach a lot of the communities that are often, uh, neglected and we want to make sure we count, we get as accurate a count as possible because it has a huge impact. Um, and then finally, I just want to let you all know, the mayor's recuperating very well. He's been doing some work from home and he hopes to return for a few hours tomorrow, but he's doing great. He's trying to get in his 10,000 steps around the house, but Rhonda, Rhonda keeps trying to stop him.
Attorney Betza, I have nothing.
Renee, can you follow up on that, in, about that booting question about whether people are being pulled over? Because it does relate to the conversation we had at the budget hearing where we were told that one officer does the booting. So is that officer driving around and looking for motorists to boot? I really think that's an important, uh, fact that we need to know.
Also...
And how many? How, how often does that happen versus being booted where you're parked?
Also, I think there need to be some serious sensitivity training. If you pick a car and you need to boot it and the lady's expecting, don't tell her to walk. If she wanted to drive the city hall pass and pay the bill, that's, what's wrong with that? All we want is the money. That's all we want is the money. That's due us. Don't tell her to walk. Don't tell the senior citizen to walk. Don't tell me to walk with a cane.
That's right.
Come on, we have to have some sensitivity and some common sense. And I agree with, with Ms. Allen. We need to revisit that. Thank you.
Thank you. Rose, I think that'll adjourn us.
Okay, city council adjourns at 9:55. Mr. Winarski, Ms. Allen, Mr. Brzezinski, Mr. Keys, Ms. Schoff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan.